I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting before we get underway. A few administrative details to cover. First, the fire exit is located to your left in this room. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevator. Use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. Meetings are being recorded by our secretary, well, Donna, tonight. Michelle's not able to be with us for the purpose of a record in minutes, not as a verbatim transcript. So when you come to the microphone, please identify yourself each time with your name and your address, and please speak into the microphone so she can hear what you're saying. We will follow the items in the order they appear on the agenda. Extra copies of the agenda are available at the table just inside the door. Once the case has been called, the applicant or their representative will come forward, state their name and address, then they'll stop for a moment, raise their right hand, be sworn in, and then they can proceed to address the application. During the presentation of the applicant's case, they may be interrupted by questions or comments from the members of the board. There's no time limit on that. It can go as long as we choose. Once that process is concluded, we will open it up to public input. There are three categories of public input that have evolved. We're always open to other suggestions on other categories if you have any. The first is those who will be speaking in favor of the application. We'd ask you to come up to the side, stand there, come up to the podium one at a time, identify yourself by name and address, and speak to the application. Your comments are addressed to the board, not to the applicant and not to members of the audience. After all those who wish to speak in favor of the application have been heard, we then open it up to those who wish to speak in opposition to the application, following the same process. After that, we'll open it up for those who want to talk about the application but aren't for it or against it, just want to talk to us. You're welcome to come up and talk to us as well. None of the people who are speaking in favor or opposed or just talking about the application are sworn at all. After we hear all of the public input, we'll give the applicant a chance to respond if they wish to anything that was raised during the public input portion. Once that is concluded, then the case is closed and we'll move on to the next case. After we've heard all the cases on the agenda, we will take a short break, the duration of which will be announced at the start of the break. And once we come back from the break, the members of the board will deliberate on each of the applications that have been on the agenda in the order in which they appear on the agenda and for which the applicant is present. So if the first applicant has left, but the second applicant is present, we would take the second application first and then go back and do the first after the second was concluded. There is no opportunity for public input during that portion of the meeting unless it's specifically requested by the board, and it rarely is. Once we've concluded the deliberative portion of the meeting, we will take up any other matters that we have, and then the meeting will be adjourned. If you leave before we make a decision on a case and you're interested in knowing the outcome of the case, you can either watch it on TV if you get it at home, or you can call the office tomorrow morning after 9:00, Town Hall at the Planning and Zoning Department, and they'll be glad to tell you what our decision was on the application. Before we get underway, I'd welcome Mr. Lepary back for another seven-year terms. Nice to have you continue with us. Congratulations, and we look forward to another year of serving the town of Arundacote and working together with all the members of the board. So we will call the first case on the agenda?
ZBZB-1512. Upon the matter of request by Nixon Peabody LP, acting as agent for Bell Atlantic Mobile of Rochester, doing business as Verizon Wireless, for area variances to construct and operate a self-supporting cell tower, lighting rod, whip antenna on an equipment platform with less than required setbacks and exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 4657 Culver Road, Seabreeze Volunteer Fire Association, and a C business district.
Good evening. My name is Tom Greiner. I'm an attorney with Nixon Peabody located Clinton Square in City Rochester and here on behalf of Verizon.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you. With me tonight are Peter Frond, who is an RF engineer with Verizon Wireless and is in charge of this region with respect to the radio frequency needs and requirements. And in back of him seated to the right is Rob McCabe. Rob is with Pyramid Network Services, which is the site acquisition consultant that Verizon Wireless used in connection with what we call the Seabreeze site.
That's determining where the location would work?
Peter, well, that's, and I'll get into that, but that's, why not? That's a good question. In the first instance, Peter, the RF engineer, is the one who's responsible for figuring out what a particular area needs in order to comply with Verizon's build of its network and what will work, what height, what latitude and longitude would be required. And so that would be Peter. And Peter would construct a, what they call, search area or search ring. So if we're trying to cover this area, which we are, Culver, Seabreeze, Duran, that whole area, it would be Peter who would say, well, what do I need to meet my objectives of coverage and capacity, connect with the surrounding sites to make sure that there's like a seamless coverage to serve the Verizon customers? So he would have a cell search ring area, and he would then turn that over, and he would say, I need something of this elevation above mean sea level, kind of looking at this general latitude and longitude, and he would then send somebody like Rob in this case, took a while, and what they call scrub the ring. First thing they would look for would be, and he would give them the elevation that I need generally in a certain area, so the first thing they would look for, actually just as your ordinance would require, would be colocation opportunities. They would look for tall structures, they would look for towers in the search ring that would, at a certain elevation, satisfy Verizon's needs and objectives. They would look for, if there were no structures, either rooftops, water tanks, other towers, they would then look for, say, what we call raw land candidates where a tall structure, in this case, a monopole would be needed, and start looking for areas that would meet those needs and start looking at landlords, possible potential landlords in that area. And that's in fact what Rob's company did here. So it's in a sense a combination. The site acquisition consultant would go back to, in this case, Peter, the RF engineer, and say, I have these candidates. I have, maybe had a water tank, maybe was kind of not quite in the search ring but near, because they look outside the search ring as well. And I have these other candidates. What do you think? And the elevation would be provided, the latitude and longitude. Peter would run propagations, such as you have in Exhibit G of your application booklets. Would run propagations to see if in fact they would meet the requirements. Is the signal going far enough? Is it connecting up with the rest of the network? What is it doing? And then Peter would make a hierarchy of candidates. At a law firm, we would be putting together a zoning analysis to look at different zoning districts, look at what would be required there. This is all put together-
So, counselor?
Yes?
I don't want to interrupt your presentation-
No, please do. I don't mind.
But the question is, so is it safe to assume that you've performed all of these analyses and that the spot you're coming to tonight is the best spot for Verizon and for the people in Arundacote? And you're asking us for a variance for this spot?
Yes.
Because you did all those calculations, and this is the one?
This is the one. If you look again at Exhibit G, we have numerous alternatives that were looked at. They were ranked lower than this for good reasons, and so the answer, I think, is yes.
All right. Thank you.
If we'd had a better site, Mr. Paulino, we would have probably applied for that one. All of this, of course, is subject, we don't always get our best site, because a landlord might say no, or it just may not fit in that respect. But in this case, we're here because it was a site that worked, a site that worked well. We had a willing landlord. It met certain requirements of the ordinance, i.e., in your hierarchy, after colocations, you look at municipal, and then you look at private landowners. This is not technically municipal, but it's close. We call it quasi-municipal. So it met that. It met the size requirement of the parcel. It consolidated disturbances, if you will. It is already a parcel dedicated to public type uses. In this case, we have the fire hall, and we also have the T-Mobile installation on top of the building, and I'll be talking a little bit more about that in a minute. And so it was the type of location, it was a commercial district, so it met the kinds of requirements that would be beyond Peter's, say, ideal RF technical requirements. It seemed like a good site for those reasons. I've been at this for 30 years with this client, and I will tell you that where, even before ordinances would look at municipal sites as preferred, we looked at the issue of who would be deriving the rent, where, a tiebreaker for us even before all the ordinances came into effect in the mid to late '90s and after, tiebreaker would be if we could be at a municipality and the public would be getting the money, or something of that nature, that would be a tiebreaker. Here, all the factors came together, and it was a fairly easy choice to come to this site, because we realized that in addition to satisfying Verizon's needs, site act talking to the fire hall, it seemed like it would be a good fit for it and its mission as well. So it was, as I said, a relatively easy choice in that respect. The one thing we could not do here was meet all the setback requirements or clear zone requirements, might be a better way to put it, because in a sense, we don't really need a height variance per se, because I think in your ordinance, you let towers go up to 200 feet. But you have a clear zone requirement which actually keys off the height and the setbacks from certain items, and we don't need those, and so we're here.
By the clear zone, what you're talking about is if the tower were to fall over the radius of the tower?
Correct.
Yeah, all right.
Correct.
Just for those who are watching on TV later.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Chairman. Can I just interrupt? I wanted just to clarify that, in fact, the variance is not for the height of the tower, it's for the clear zone, which is based on the height of the tower.
Right.
And that's so in case anyone was confused, the clear zone is defined in our code by the height of the tower.
Right. So the one that, for example, is six feet, that would mean that if the tower were to fall, it would go six feet over somebody else's property, right? Depending upon where it fell.
So the clear zone just is the perimeter that's defined, so if you have a 100-foot tower, then the clear zone is defined as 100 feet around the base of the tower.
Right.
The radius. Yes.
And in this case, because you define the clear zone as also being clear from parking lots, in a sense, we have an infinite variance or something, because we are in the parking lot. We're not even a half a foot, we are in it. So anytime you're in the parking lot, you will need a variance for that, even if you didn't need it for anything else. And again, it depicted on the site plan that is in your booklets, it's also here in the easel, Costage Engineering drew that radius, a circle whose radius was in fact the height of a pole.
That was on the plan.
64 feet. And so you can see, there you go. Thank you. And Peter will point that out for you.
I see that the planning board, the planning board took action on this already.
Yes.
Could you just refresh our recollection as to what the planning board found?
Yes. The planning board issued site plan approval, went through its criteria, and did a single agency negative declaration, and then a 6-0 approval. Basically, not to put words in their mouth, I haven't seen any formal findings that they did, but they went through everything. They looked at the RF proof. We talked about that. We talked about the utilities, the fact that this is an unmanned structure, that it gets a couple of visits a month, or once every month, or once every two months. We talked a little bit about the fact that T-Mobile was on the roof. Why couldn't we go on the roof? And the reason there is we needed more height, but even putting stub tower, little stub towers on the roof for the different sectors, or one stub tower for all three sectors, structurally, we couldn't do it. That was actually the first thing we tried to do. And when we got involved in this, the initial plan was to go on the roof from Verizon's point of view, and it could not do it once it did structural. So then the next alternative was the pole in the parking lot there. So we went through all the site issues with parking, the utility pathways.
So, not to interrupt, but I will.
No, go ahead.
The pole is needed in order to ensure that you have the quality of signal that Verizon wants.
Correct. It's, the pole is just to get the antennas up in the air. The antennas are connected by cables to the equipment platform right below.
Goes from cell to cell, right? So they have to be high enough to connect to the other towers or antennas that are in the area, right?
Yeah, let me refine that, because cellular or wireless is a little bit different than, say, microwave long distance. The antennas talk to the cellphone, and cables go down to equipment, and actually, one tower isn't talking directly to another. There's, in other words, there's no line of sight between the towers. Line of sight is between the person using it and this particular tower, these antennas. The tower actually routes the transmission back to a central switch, which then would route to the companion tower. So if I'm driving from here to here, and there are two towers here, these towers aren't talking to each other. The phone would talk to this tower, go back to the switch. The switch would then, as you moved along, would convey it to that tower. So all the towers are connected to the switch.
This is more acting like a repeater than an actual tower?
Yeah. And if you wanted the science on that, I have Peter here. That's about as far as I can get.
Couple of questions. Will the antenna move from the fire association to the tower?
The fire association's whip antenna will go on top of our tower.
Will the additional, will moving the whip antenna add capacity or RF capacity to the fire association mainly the water ways around it? Would that give you?
Okay. I see the chief is here. I'm going to let him speak to that, because I'm really, the only thing I really, I think it's going to help them, but I only know that because he said that last week.
And...
Excuse me, Andre. Can you speak into the mic? Because the mic-
I'm sorry. The two questions asked is, will the additional tower add RF capacity to the fire station? And the second question, I mean, the first question was, will the whip antenna that's currently located on the building move to the tower? And will that increase their range and ability to respond to emergency call, especially late calls, because there's a dead zone out in that area, like in the current configuration?
I think you'll probably hear it directly from the chief on that one.
Okay. To follow up Andre's question, does the whip antenna add to the height?
The whip antenna will actually sit on top of the 64-foot pole, so from the ground level to the very tip of that whip antenna should be 84 feet.
So it's 84 feet as opposed to 64 feet?
Yeah, the tower is 64 feet. The total structures above ground level would be 84 feet.
So the circumference has to be changed too?
Well, you know, I looked, yeah.
I don't think that the clearance zone is defined, I think it's defined by the tower and not the accessories appended to the tower.
But in the event it falls, and that whip antenna is still going to do damage?
I mean, it's conceivable if it fell like that. And I was going to address your town engineer's comments. Labella, Carrie was nice enough to give those to us, and we did look at those, and we do have something to submit that's responsive to the town engineer on that very issue.
Labella wrote in their letter that I, we got today, that you didn't submit any plans for the actual tower itself.
No. And the reason for that is that Verizon doesn't actually have a tower manufacturer till it gets its approvals. It then sends it out to bid. What the engineers do, however, is make sure that the pole can be constructed, in this case, so that if it were, and I'm going to summarize Costage Engineering's letter, which I'll also pass around. If I may. Thank you.
Well, I would assume they would do it properly, but again, you're asking us as the zoning board to approve something that we really don't know conforms or has met all the specifications.
Yeah, and that's why typically in a case like this, where the actual construction of the tower may have an impact on the board, what we would typically ask and have done in many cases is ask that you would condition the receipt of the building permit on your town engineers passing off on the construction drawings once they're actually developed and submitted. That is typically the way many towns would handle, would handle that, when the actual construction of the tower itself becomes perhaps an issue. And we've done that many, many times.
So we don't, we don't rule on the structure itself in terms of whether it's constructed properly.
Right.
All we do is the concept of a 64-foot tower-
Correct.
-as opposed to a 20-foot tower.
That's right. But if you, as Mr., is it Lepary?
Mm-hmm.
Lepary?
Mm-hmm.
Is concerned, can you approve this and still worry about, say, the citizens, public health, safety, and welfare? If you wanted to go to that safeguard, you could condition, if you were going to approve this, you could condition the building permit on satisfactory review of the actual construction drawings. We're confident, and I think we're confident because we've done thousands of these towers and without an issue.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is if we approve a variance that, say, for a fence, like we do, you can't just put up the fence without going to the town, getting the permit, and making sure that it's structurally sound, right?
I was going to interrupt and let you know that the next phase upon board approval is actually, they have to issue, they have to submit a building permit application. And the one thing, when it comes to even additions on an existing tower, the first and foremost, the building inspector and DPW commissioner are looking for a structural engineering analysis and report that comes with the application to ensure that, in this case, the structure is going to be constructed and meeting standards for New York State Building Code and other federal guidelines that might exist for a structure of this nature. So the concern about constructability would be addressed at the building permit level, and we could also have our, the town engineer review it at that time. Often, if it's been stamped by a licensed structural engineer, then that's the fail-safe there, that the person's sort of guaranteeing based on their reputation and their license that it's construct, it's going to be structurally sound.
Okay. So just, I'm going to read one sentence from Dave Weisenreiter, who is a PE here in New York, and he sealed this. He said, "The monopole is proposed approximately 43 feet from the closest property line. The monopole shall be designed and constructed with the lower section being reinforced such that if there is ever a structural failure, the monopole shall collapse within a radius of 43 feet or less." So that was, actually, we had already asked for the engineers to look at this before we got Labella's comments, because we're asking you to give us a variance where we're for the clear zone, so we wanted to make sure that we were, would be able to show you or demonstrate that this would be designed properly.
My only comment is that the, I guess, the size of that whip antenna on top, you're coming to us for a clear zone of 64 feet versus a clear zone of 84 feet, and how, you know, he's going to talk to us about how big that antenna is.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that itself, if it's a large antenna and it came down-
Okay.
-we should be doing, looking at this for 84 feet, not 64.
Well, let me just say two things. One is Ms. Ivor said, your clear zone is really the tower, not the antenna. However, I understand your concern is still-
Well, yeah, because it's all going to be one.
Your ordinance may be your ordinance, but if people are there, and so that's why this will be designed with a breakpoint so that it would collapse within 43 feet. If it does that, the whip antenna is still going to stay within that 64 feet.
Right.
So.
On the construction of the antenna, is this fiberglass housing wrapped with the metal RF cables inside?
You're talking about the whip antenna?
Yeah.
Again, maybe I'll let the chief, when I'm sure he'll say something.
Because we're not talking about a lot of weight, right?
No, we're not.
We're talking about flexible.
Right.
Okay.
It's just a whip.
Military standard.
Right.
Okay.
Exactly. I had an outline, but I think we're, we've been in different, all kinds of different parts of my outline. I will say just that the area was scrubbed, that we did look at many other alternative parcels that are in Exhibit G, and they were all rejected for one reason or another, whether it was an RF reason, whether it was for size of the parcel, whether it was for, again, in your hierarchy, municipal or colocation, municipal, private, for that reason as well.
Just a question to throw in, you're mentioning you looked at other locations. The one that comes to mind is the water tower. I mean-
Down south, south of our site?
Yes.
Yeah, in fact-
I mean, to me, that would seem like it's taller.
It's a good site, and it is our next site to the south, and Verizon received a building permit from the town for that site and is in the process of actually, that will be another site to the south. It wouldn't be sort of this area, but it will actually be one of the puzzle pieces in the Coolidge.
So the fact that it's only a mile apart, mile and a half apart, it's, you still need-
We could get into that. What's happening is that over the decades, as this went from hardly anybody using the service, to now we have 320 million subscribers in the United States, and not only for voice, but data has exploded. So yes, these sites are getting closer and closer, they're getting shorter and shorter. As I said last week, and I know Ms. Smith was here last week for this, but when I started working on these, we were doing 400-foot towers, 350-foot towers. And over the years, the towers get, and the sites, I should say, get closer together, and they get lower and lower, because so many people use these for so many applications that it's a job keeping up with them. So yes, sometimes we're a mile, mile and a half away from the next site.
Learned something new.
I personally worked on almost all the sites in Arundacote over the years, not all of them, but most of them. But they are, this 60-foot center line, 64-foot pole is one of the shortest, I've worked on maybe 1,500 of these myself, and this is probably one of the five shortest in the entire system. But it's also becoming more and more common to have these sites at this kind of a height.
So if I understand correctly, it's not a question of wave propagation, it's a matter of overlapping wave propagation areas so that you can have more capacity in a shorter period of time?
Right. It's, yeah. It, I mean, think of a flash- Right, it's, yeah, it, it, I mean, think of a flashlight. Uh, when the flashlight is, uh, low, say to a table, it's bright, but it's also a very small area, and as you raise that flashlight up, it covers a wider area but less intense.
So more, so adding more flashlights, they have the same intensity?
Correct. Yeah, that would be a decent analogy to look at it like that. So, um, so yes, this will not be the last site in Arondequay. Um, it, uh, the system is getting mature, uh, and one day the technology will change. Uh, but right now, this is still what has to happen, it has, the antennas have to get up into the air at an ever increasingly lower height, but they still have to get up there. As we, uh, move into more concentrated areas, we get the water tanks, we get the rooftops, uh, towers are avoided, uh, but in certain areas, that's not possible. By the way, one other point, uh, we've given you propagation, propagation showing why we need the height, but another reason, uh, even if we could go lower, if Peter would approve a site a little bit lower for RF reasons, we have to worry about the T-Mobile site there as well, so we need to make sure that we're not broadcasting into the T-Mobile site and vice versa. So we had to be also, they're up and around, they're on the, the top of the roof, they're up around forty-one, forty-two feet, and, uh, we had to get above them as well, so, um, that was another factor that, uh, I thought you'd wanna know.
And the other thing that you attached, which, uh, I just wanted to reference, you, you attached, I think it was Exhibit C, the legal standards?
Yes.
That apply to this, and because this is a, in the nature of a utility, uh, which has public benefit, the discretion that we have is really very circumscribed and limited, is that right?
I think so, you'd, uh, obviously your attorney's here, uh, but, uh, under public utility law, you wanna look at, has the applicant proven need, which is why we put the RF information in for you. And number two, is this site one that will cause the, cause the least detriment? Is it among the sites that are possible, is, is it the best choice? Um, and so if that's proven, whether it's a use variance or an area variance, uh, that pretty much is the proof. We still, and we've always done this, we still try as much as we can to, and at Exhibit, uh, uh, E, we still try to look at traditional area variance standards and in your ordinance, and try to conform to that. But the real, uh, standard is, as you say, Mr. Chair, Exhibit C.
But the bottom line is if you establish the need and that that location is necessary, then absent some real danger to the public,
Right.
we are bound to grant your, your request.
Right.
Within certain-
Within certain parameters.
Maybe reasonable limitations that we might impose.
That's right, uh, put it this way, uh, when Rosenberg, which is the case that established that standard, came out ninety-three, uh, the end of ninety-three, I was working on a case in ninety, ninety-one that made its way up to the appellate division, was cited in Rosenberg for that public utility standard. We made wireless in the fourth department, uh, a public utility for zoning purposes. Rosenberg, uh, the court of appeals case that next year after ours, uh, kinda confirmed it. Since ninety-three, if we do our job right, uh, the, oh, I, put it this way, in two thousand of these, since I've been working on them, we've had maybe fifteen or twenty lawsuits and most of them have been defending town approvals, maybe twenty-five lawsuits. So, the Rosenberg standard really helped the entire state deploy wireless probably a lot quicker than it would've otherwise. So I think that's pretty much it, I mean, our application, we go into it more depth, but it's all, I mean, what we wanted to submit to you is all in here.
And we appreciate it, it was very interesting to read through and it was very extensive. Are there any other questions or comments from any members of the board?
I was just wondering, did the chief wanna say something?
Did you wanna speak before the multitudes that are in attendance tonight?
No, there was no need, I just know that, um, our legal counsel made a comment that the chief could speak to something and I wasn't sure what it was.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that, I mean, he's a better person to speak, he's not part of our application, i- in a sense, he's our landlord and they are gonna use it, there will be a co-locator, but I didn't want, especially, sorry to answer your questions, I'd rather have him with more knowledge speak to, because your issues were really, or some of them were with the fire hall.
I, I didn't have any specific questions, I just wanted to see if there was anything you needed to say.
I'm just curious on, the, from the chief, uh, curious on the diameter of that whip antenna.
Well, don't, maybe a good time for me to be quiet?
We'll let the chief come up.
Good evening, Chief Dave DeRoller, Seabreeze Fire Department. I can answer any questions you have in terms of the emergency service aspect of this. From a wireless, uh, voice and data, both of our chief's vehicles have uh, mobile tablets that have automated pre-plans in them to respond and, uh, we use our network in that aspect, from a RF and radio aspect, the county is proposing an upgrade to the system within the next two or three years. This will greatly enhance, uh, if we were able to put this tower up and place a whip antenna, which is not going to be twenty feet. The existing antenna is, is probably close to thirty feet, so between the height of our current building and our current whip, uh, we're right around, I'm going to estimate nearly sixty feet. Um, I'm gonna say on the high end, a ten-foot antenna max on top of this tower, as long as Verizon approves it, would be sufficient for us to gain additional coverage, more than we have now, to, you know, cover, to, uh, cover dead spots that we have, may have in the district for two-way radios.
Just out of curiosity, 'cause I'm, I'm thinking the worst-case scenario, if it were to fall, how, what is the diameter of the shaft of that?
The current whip, I, I'm gonna say it's a larger antiquated whip, so I'm gonna say it's most likely around two inches. I'm sure with today's updated technology, it could be a lot less, uh, solid and rigid, where it would, just where it would snap if it was to come in contact with, so to say, a, a fence or another building.
Okay, so you're, you're saying the current one is two inches in diameter?
I'm gonna estimate that, I've never put a tape measure around it, I can.
It's not six inches.
I mean, it was, it was most likely put up before it was born.
So it's probably a little bigger maybe than a broom handle?
Yes, a- and, and again, with today's technology, I'm sure we can, uh, shop around for a, uh, smaller antenna. We don't need that extensive amount of height, I can tell you that right now, it will not be eighty-four feet in the air, that's overkill, we don't need that. And we're also bound by Canada, so we can't go over our current height of our RF antenna as it sits right now. So if it's only at sixty-six feet, that's as far as we can go with our two-way radio communication across the lake. So we have regulations we have to follow also, it's not just the Verizon's aspect of it.
What you're saying right now is the antenna you've got on the roof is approximately sixty-some feet tall.
I'm gonna estimate that, I'm gonna estimate that.
How tall's the building, do you know?
Building is approximately, I'm in a, uh, between thirty-two and thirty-four feet tall. It, we're, I think we'd suffice with a five-foot antenna on the top of this tower. I wouldn't expect it.
Who's gonna determine that size, you're gonna let Verizon figure it out, what you need?
No, we would hire our own, uh, RF radio company, come in and install a new antenna in conjunction with their construction. You know, most likely be placed on the ground and then when they're, when they're constructing the tower, it would go up as one.
Very good.
But keep in mind that the whip that's on the roof, again, will come down, so that's another,
One less.
One less, uh, thing on the rooftop, and the reason why we proposed the tower was moving the antenna over, and also keep in mind that the antenna is shielded thirty-three feet from the, um, south, north and east sides of the structure. It's only visible really from the north and, north and northwest corners.
My question is more technical. I'm not, uh, I don't know if Chief DeRoller, you can answer it, and I might mean to put you on the spot, but we're talking about, um, telephone communication. We're also talking about fire department communication, we're talking about T-Mobile, we're talking about Canada. Is there a point where it gets so saturated, you can't, you just can't go anywhere anymore? Or is that limitless in a certain strata, so to speak?
Well, they're all using different, uh, terms of technology. I mean, you, you know our frequencies through the fire department or, or low van one-five-four. We can only transmit so far across the lake and we'll hear Canada at times on a clear day in the summer, on, on our base radio. Uh, as for, I can't speak to T-Mobile's construction, I know Verizon uses a certain network, so. It's, it's not gonna be saturating in the air within, uh, the tower itself so much that it's gonna impede on other technologies, I think they're separate, 'cause they're using separate, separate technologies. But Peter would have to answer on that.
Peter could answer, I, I could give the quick answer. Uh, we're broadcasting at a much shorter, shorter wavelengths, we're at seven hundred megahertz, eight fifty, nineteen hundred and twenty-one hundred. So, the higher the megahertz, the shorter the wavelength and, uh, the shorter the distance that you really go. Like those lower broadcast frequencies that the chief is talking about are gonna put it much further in a horizontal direction. The other thing I just wanted to mention, if it, if it is interest to the board, in terms of how these things are built, um, they're built to a standard from the, uh, which is, uh, promulgated by the American National Standards Institute, ANSI, uh, and this one is two-twenty-two, uh, TIA, EIA, two-twenty-two G. And what they do is they look at, yeah, they look at wind speeds, they look at the high three-second gusts under the current standard, and then also assume that there's gonna be radial ice all around it, so they'll look at that kinda loading and strong winds and they build them to that pretty exacting standard, which is why, for example, in Hurricane Andrew, uh, the towers that were in the path of that weren't affected like everything else was, except for one that got, uh, knocked over by a flying airplane hangar, the airport down in Florida. Uh, so these things, um, are actually, um, I mean, houses and buildings are probably gonna be more affected by weather before these towers are, they're very, very well-built.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public opinion, is there, uh, public input, is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone here that would like to talk to us about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this application. And move on to the next item on our agenda.
CB sixteen oh one dash one, upon the matter of request by Adrian Sullifer and Jennifer Valerio for a special use permit to harbor three hens with coop pursuant to Section two thirty-five seventy of Town Code on premises one-one-six, Keating Drive in an R-one residential district.
Mr. Sullivan?
How are you?
I'm fine, if you, and is this your wife?
It is.
If you can both raise your, first off, can you give us your names and your address?
I'm Jennifer Valerio, address one-one-six Keating Drive, Rochester, one-four-six-two-two.
Adrian Sullivan, same address, one, one-one-six Keating Drive.
If you'd raise your right hands, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. I gather from the application you've submitted and the pictures that you already have these hens?
We do.
And how long have you had them?
We've had them about three weeks, huh?
No, no, more than that, like three months.
Three months?
Three months?
Yeah.
And, uh, at the, prior to getting these hens, did you make any inquiry of the town and whether or not it was okay to have hens on your property?
The, um, they were given to me by the, uh, by the Amish and, um, I, I, I went there on a visit and, um, I let them know I just had a firstborn daughter and they're like, well, we have a gift for you, and I was like, okay, and, um, and they, they handed me a box and there were chickens in there, and this little son's like, you have to take it, and I, well, I didn't want them, and then, and then I was like, well, okay, I'll take them. So I took them and that's what, and originally we didn't plan on having the chickens and then we were like, well, okay, I'll take them and, uh, I'll raise them, right, and, you know, my-
For eggs, 'cause they lay eggs.
And, um, my family is all from Europe and, uh, we've all had farms, my father's had a horse farm and, and, uh, we've always had chickens and I know how to raise them and, so. It wasn't a planned thing, um, we did have a rooster as well and, um, and that was the issue, we didn't know it was a rooster, 'cause it was the-
It wouldn't crow, yeah.
It wouldn't crow. And then we found out it was a rooster, uh, 'cause it's a, there are like a couple of different species, so we got rid of the rooster because of, uh, we were getting some complaints, you know, um, and, uh, I didn't keep them in the box, you know, for like the first week, you know, I had, I built a little coop and, um, they would get out of the coop, you know, and run in the road and, uh, now it builds a little better of a coop, the garage door shuts now, all the ways, they don't, you know, escape. The only problem is the neighbor down the road has chickens, so sometimes they like to come to our house and, you know, it's, um-
Her chickens got out and I think that, our chickens were getting out, uh, in our yard and there's a lady down the road who has chickens and-
Lady down which road?
A road from us, I don't know what street she's on.
Mallard? Keating?
It's, uh, the street right over.
I have no idea.
So there's, there's other hens or chickens near you?
Right.
Someone has something and she thought her chickens were coming to ours, which they were, because we only have a few, and I don't know.
Do you know how many she has?
She has a bunch, I mean, uh, a bunch.
Like more than four?
Well, she had, there were, at one point at my house, there were, with my chickens and hers, I think there were about ten chickens.
That would be more than four.
Yeah.
You have three, right?
Yeah, so.
The reason I ask is because if you're having chickens in the town of Arondequay, you need a special use permit, you have to come to us, and I don't have a recollection of approving chickens in your neighborhood on a previous occasion in the last ten years that I've been on the board. So, we'll have to check for the chickens running around your neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, they're not, I, well, when she came to ask.
Well, the, my point isn't that they're fenced in, my point is that, and this is for the adification of those who might be watching this later on TV, is that if you wanna get hens, or you get hens given to you, or you wanna have eggs, uh, and you wanna have a, a chicken coop in your yard, you need to come and get a permit before you get the chickens.
Right, we don't, uh-
I understand your situation, that you didn't plan on it, you didn't plan on keeping them, they just sorta grew on you.
I didn't wanna kill them, 'cause that was the, he gave it to us for basically to kill and, you know, eat, you know, eat it and-
Yeah, that's what they do.
Feed it to the baby, and I was like, uh, I didn't wanna kill it, you know, that was basically. So, I did some research on the chickens, um, that, what type of feed, you know, and, and, uh, and the grit they need and, and, uh, everything, so.
So you're learning this as you go along?
Right, they do have everything they need, um, I just bought a coop, uh, on Amazon, it was like two hundred bucks, but it's a real nice coop, um, so they can stay warm, you know, 'cause I was thinking about it, and they're going in the garage, which is insulated, but it's not, you know, it's not, I don't, kinda don't want them roaming around the garage.
So you're gonna put that, the coop that you got on Amazon, is that gonna be in the garage or is that gonna be outside?
I think, I'm thinking of putting it either in the garage if I have space, or on the side of my house, in the backyard. So it wouldn't be invisible.
There's like a side on the far end of the garage where-
On the north end, behind the concrete blocks?
Yes, correct.
Alright, which is what keeps you from being able to see the coop from the street?
Right.
Or from Mallard, so the, uh, you might put it there and you might put it inside the garage- So the, uh, you might put it there and you might put it inside the garage.
Right.
Right.
Now, with respect to inside the garage, does that door close all the way now?
Yes, it does.
All right. Because I noticed in one of the pictures it looked like it, something could sneak under.
No, we had a garage door guy come and he fixed it.
All right. Because the reason, and do you close them in there at night?
Yes.
Um, they go in there on their own.
Yeah, but you close the door at night, they can't get through, they don't have a way in and out without you opening the door for them, right?
Correct.
All right. And because chickens and hens tend to attract others that like to feed on them.
Right.
And so-
Fox. I've seen the fox, you know, before I had the chickens, I've had fox in my yard and stuff and that's why I try to, you know, close them in.
Okay.
So if you, if you install this Amazon coop inside your garage and close the garage door, when the garage door opens, will the chickens be able to exit the garage?
The, um, well, the way the coop, I think I have a picture of the coop, of the coop I bought, um, so it's a, it's, I can have them shut, you know, I can put feet in there, close the, close the gate and, um, if, if I need to leave the garage door open or whatnot. So.
With rea-, obviously you're not familiar with the other permits that we've granted allowing people to have chickens and hens and such in their yard, but one of the requirements that we've imposed is to ask the town to check within six months to a year with the neighbors to make sure that there's no issues among the neighbors. The other thing that we've asked is that you provide a certification to the town on an annual basis that the chickens have been examined by a veterinarian and found not to be carrying any diseases or illnesses that would, uh, could be spread to humans or, you know, others in the neighborhood. Are you willing to do that?
Yes.
Have you had any, uh, have you had any complaints, the, the, from the neighbor to the right of the garage, if you're looking at the face of the garage from your driveway? The neighbor to the right is mostly affected where all the stuff is up against the fence. It looks like from this picture, you got a bunch of old wood, maybe even a sign, some type of sign from real estate.
Right.
Um, is that neighbor to that side there complained at all about parents?
No, that, that's, uh, all my neighbors, I mean, Brian's my one neighbor next door and the guy behind me as well, he, he's a good friend of mine, he hasn't said anything. My neighbor next door, he wants to buy chickens as well. He wants, he asked me where I got my chickens from and he wants chickens as well, so.
Make sure when you talk to him about buying chickens that you tell him he has to come here first.
Right.
I mean, out of all the applications we've had, uh, come to the town, um, with pictures or with descriptions of the coops or, um, plans for coop, this coop is put together haphazard. I mean, it's, you've just got some, um, you, you've just got some, uh, plastic stapled to the top of the, the old dog, uh-
He is doing better than the one on Portland.
Yes, yes. Um, but my, my point is that, that side of your garage, that whole right side of your garage looks kind of disheveled.
Right. Yep. Yeah, that's why I purchased a coop, you know, a real nice one, so if someone-
Well, that's, that's the thing, we'd like, I mean, I'd like to see a picture of that coop, knowing that that's going to be the coop, but also the question is, could you move the coop, the new coop, and, uh, to the actual back of the garage so it's not up against your neighbor's fence and stuffed in that, that side? I mean, that-
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, but then the, um, the neighbor next door to us on Keating, her backyard, I mean, she would see that if-
Well, but it, it would be, it would be on the opposite side of the yard, it'd be right up against the back of the garage, it's probably twenty feet away from her fence.
Right, right, right.
Right now, you have that, you have that cage and you have all that stuff stuffed up against the, the fence on the property line.
Right.
And it looks, uh, doesn't look good. I mean, it looks terrible, it doesn't look kept, it doesn't look neat.
Right.
You know, if, again, if it was up against my neighbor's fence, I'd have a problem with it.
Yeah.
Um, you know, more so have a problem with all the clutter than-
Right, right.
Than the actual chickens themselves.
We just, we just moved back into the home about six months ago, so now we're, we're renovating at the same time, so like the drywall and stuff, we, uh-
There was a bunch of remodeling and the garbage people, they didn't take some stuff, so it was off to the side, but we put it out and his mom also put that sign for the real estate, because she was going to sell the house before we moved back in and that's why that was over there and stuff, so.
One of the things that I would suggest to you, if we, if we approve the permit that you're asking for, I would strongly encourage you to contact the Planning and Zoning Department in the town and, and look at some of the other applications that we've approved, because many of them attached to their applications, uh, very informative materials on steps to take to control rodents, to control issues with neighbors, and if you're in the learning process, these people have already done a lot of the work.
Yeah.
And you can look through their applications and probably learn a lot.
Okay.
To follow up on the chairman's point though, and Mr. Lepone's point, I would say that if I can recall, the last applicant who came to us was on St. Paul and that applicant had, I believe one of the applicants may have been someone who worked at a veterinary clinic, and that applicant had a very well-drawn idea of what they were looking for, but they didn't have a real concrete plan. So we gave them the opportunity to come back with a plan to say, you know, this is exactly where we're going to, to design it, what the foundation's going to be, how high off the ground, how we're going to keep the food secure and all that stuff, and they said it was so expensive, they decided not to do it. In this case, this application does not seem to have the level of detail and to the chairman's point, I don't know how we could approve this without that level of detail beforehand. So to Mr., to the chairman's point, it might be, might make sense to look at other applications that we have approved and come back with that amount of detail.
I could show you the picture of the coop I did versus-
All right.
I don't know if I could, do you want to see it?
Sure. I think you could show Mr. Evans.
You can pass, well, here, we'll pass it, give it to Mr. Evans and he'll pass it down and you can pick it up from Mr. Polino.
I have a question concerning the health concerns. There have been several health organizations, the CDC, state of New York, that's raised a question about chickens and exposure to small children because of passing on various types of illnesses, diseases. And I'm just wondering, looking at your little one here, what exposure she would have to the chickens?
I don't bring her around them.
There's, we have, uh, we do have a fence, like a-
Like a snow fence.
Like a type of fence, like, like a snow fence, sort of. So she would, she comes up to the fence and looks at them, you know, and as I feed them and, uh, but she doesn't-
She doesn't have any direct contact or something?
No, she, no, she doesn't have, I don't let her.
I mean, I grew, I grew up, my parents, you know, old-fashioned, they would, you know, make me go feed the chickens and, uh, you know, and it was different back then and I'd go in the coop and I'd, I'd have like, you know, bugs on me and stuff, little, little, uh-
That's disgusting.
Stuff and, but this was in Romania, but, um, but no, we don't bring her around.
Let me ask you this, to, the, the last application that we had, as Mr. Polino pointed out, um, we asked them to come back with a more detailed plan. And are you, are you willing to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we have an obligation on, on, that's been put on us to determine what conditions are necessary and appropriate for chickens to coexist with other animals and humans in the town. And by making it a special use permit, it, the town has said it's not a use that's incompatible with that, but they've given us the responsibility of coming up with what the conditions are and we're learning too. So, uh, what I'd ask is if it's okay with you, would you mind, um, working with Donna in the, in the town, looking at some of these applications, talking to the, uh, veteran, I believe the veterinarian that most of the people have used is Eastridge, um, Dr. Belonik up there off of, uh, Eastridge Road.
Okay.
He apparently, we've had letters from him about, and he's familiar with chickens and the diseases and illnesses that they can carry. Also, you know, given the fact that you have, uh, your, your daughter here with you tonight and what Mr. Hammond was referring to, uh, checking with the pediatrician to see if the pediatrician would have any recommendations and if you could, you know, get us a, a picture that's a little clearer than the one on the phone of the coop and how you plan and where you sighting it in the, on the map that you got when you purchased the property and, and showing us the layout.
Okay.
That's going to help us determine a lot better. I mean, it's not that we're, as I said, the town has determined it's not an incompatible use, but we're charged with coming up with conditions that will ensure that it's okay where it is.
Right.
So we need it, as much information as you can give us and also, you know, educating yourself, as Mr. Polino pointed out, for some reason they, the last folks we asked didn't come back. I wasn't aware that it was because they decided it was too expensive, but, uh, you know, you might find as you're looking into this that this might not be something you want to continue on.
I mean, yeah, the coops, I think I paid almost two hundred bucks for and, you know, the hay and, uh, and, I mean, it is expensive, you know?
Yeah.
To have like fresh eggs, it's, it's expensive, um, to have even like the, uh, you have to have special oyster shells, which is like thirty bucks a bag and corn and, and, uh, that's not too bad.
I have a couple, I have a couple of questions. Um, what, I went out and unfortunately you weren't home, Bueno de Manicha, that's the only Romanian I speak, by the way, um, but the, the current feed, putting it on the ground, I think is a health risk because of the trash, raccoons, et cetera, and, uh, putting it on the ground, so maybe in the current state, finding a trough to feed it in. So I'll be interested in looking at how you clear the chicken run, um, or the chicken waste, uh, your feed plan and where you put the food, food and water. I think on the ground isn't, is not sustainable because of all the other threats that, that you introduce into the neighborhood. And also I, I don't think that the snow fence actually contains, I, I grew up around hundreds of chicken ducks and geese too, so, um, so I don't think the snow fence actually contains the, um, will be able to contain the chickens that you have.
Yeah.
It's easy for them to hop over it.
Yeah.
Et cetera. So those are the things that I saw, uh, when I went out. Actually, when I was there Sunday, the snow fence was down.
It was down.
And the chickens were like in a far corner.
Right.
So there's no other way to contain them. I don't think there was any fencing where they were, so I didn't want to go in there and disturb them and have them come out.
Right.
I knocked on the door, nobody answered, but, um, I would be concerned, like Andre's saying, that, you know, whatever you have now isn't working.
Yeah.
We need to see what plan you're going to have.
Right. The fence that we have up now is, like I said, it was a, I mean, it's a temporary, it was, I just put it up, you know, so they wouldn't, because they would-
They were leaving the backyard.
They were leaving the, the area and they were going in the road with the other chickens.
And at that point, where I was there Sunday, they could have walked out at any point.
Yeah, yeah.
And in addition to the fence keeping the chickens in, the other purpose that the fence serves is keeping other things out.
Right, right.
So those are all the things that, but I'd like, if you're willing, uh, we'll give you an opportunity to refine the plan.
Yep.
Okay.
And, and come back to us. You can come back, you know, if, you, we're not going to, with, with your consent, what we'll do is we will, um, hold your application and when you're, when you've got more specifics together, bring it back to us. That could be in February, could be in March.
Okay.
But the time isn't running on your application, uh, as long as, you know, we're waiting to hear back from you. So what, what we're likely to do, I think, is probably table your application and at some point, if we don't hear back from you, then it, we may take it off the table and, and make a determination on what you've presented. So I would strongly encourage you to come back to us with more.
No, we won't.
Okay?
Yes.
All right.
One more, one more thing, if I may, I would also consider moving the location of it, uh, to behind, directly behind the garage.
Okay.
Um, and maybe clearing out that side area.
Yeah.
You know, cleaning it out a little bit, but if you're going to, I take it right now, there must be a doorway or a window they can go through from one into the garage?
Yeah, there's a back, uh-
Back door.
Back door.
Back door.
Okay. I don't know if you could put a, uh, some type of window or doggy door in the back of the garage where they could go in and out and, and utilize, uh, just to get them out from that cramped spot between the wall and the, in between the garage wall and the fence. I mean, there's only maybe four foot of room there.
Yeah.
Um, and get them out into the backyard where it looks like they roam around anyway.
Yeah.
Um, but keep it, keep it attached to the back of the garage and, you know, um, leave that design up to you, but we want to see it.
Yeah, my plan was to make it, you know, so make, make it look nice, so, you know, others see, if they do want to come and see the chickens, you know.
And, and then-
They're enclosed and, and, um, it looks nice and tidy. So there's a lot of work I need to do to that home, um-
I don't know that you need to actually do all the physical work because you also still have to get approval. So you might want to just show up with a plan.
Plan first?
Yeah.
Tell us what you plan to do, don't do it first.
Okay.
Okay.
Draw a plan for the coop or whatever, where you're going to locate it and, excuse me.
And in addition to looking at the plans that were submitted by the other people that we've approved, you might also go and, and knock on their door and say, we're looking into chickens or hens and we know you have them, what, what have you learned? You can look and see what they've done. You might get ideas on where a good placement would be that, as opposed to where it is now and other things like that.
Okay.
Okay? All right.
One, one other quick comment, you know, while you're doing your research, you might just go online and look up the Center for Disease Control and see their comments about backyard chickens.
Okay.
I think you'll find they've actually issued a warning, uh, but I'll leave that up to you to draw your own conclusions.
Okay.
Okay. I haven't said anything yet.
[laughing]
I will now.
There you go.
My concern is, and you mentioned this briefly, is heat, heating the chick, the coop. And as Chief DeRoller and I myself would be extremely interested in how you do that safely.
Right.
Because you're putting a structure next to your garage or maybe right now it's in it, I don't know, but heating it, and I know chickens don't need a lot of heat.
Right, just to insulate it.
Something, but I'd be interested to know how you're going to do that.
Right.
And be sure it's really, really safe.
Yeah, I'm going to look into that as well.
That'd be good.
You know, just, just a comment there, having had chickens for many years, we never give them any heat.
Well, no wonder they got sick.
I'm just telling you, have you heated chickens before?
What's that?
Have you given heat to your chickens before?
No.
Just put them in the barn or like-
I've never heard of heating, uh, chicken coops, to be honest with you.
No, we weren't going to, I would just-
I haven't.
Just insulate the coop.
Just the hay.
You were just going to insulate it.
The hay, that's exactly right.
Yeah. All right. So just so we're clear, we have your consent to table this matter?
Yes.
That's correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about chickens or chickens in the backyard? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. We will now take a five-minute recess and resume at eight fifteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Soon will we come back?
Until we come back.